Are you guys ready? Welcome back, everyone. Thank you for allowing a small break there. I'm sorry, are we still up on that? Okay, we're still up. Again, we're coming out of recess and we will start with number four.
Hold it, Mr. Chairman, before we move on.
Thank you.
I know what you're gonna do, but we need, uh, there's been a request to table item six C and to November 29th. So I make a motion that we table item six C and D until November 29th.
Counsel, there's been a motion to postpone, uh, six C and D till the next meeting on the 29th, till the department head can speak to it.
Six C and D, a- and the reason is that the person who was going to speak to that had to take care of a death in the family. This is not for any other reason than there was a tragedy, so.
Yeah, Charlene Delta. Are we okay?
We have to vote on that, Chairman.
Okay. I hear a motion, is there a second? Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas to defer these to November 29th, items six C and D. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who may oppose say nay. Sounds unanimous. Nikki, did you capture that? Thank you. Thank you. Presentation and report. Alice McCoy.
All right, Counsel, I have with me tonight Jeff Terry from the Recreation Special Service District. He will be reporting to you on some of the projects that they have planned for this year. I just want to give you, um, just to remind you a little bit about the Recreation Special Service District. They are considered a component unit of the county. Basically, what that means is you have, um, they've given them power to act on your behalf. Based on the laws and rules that are in place, you cannot, um, control them, but you can, you can give them, you can give them budgetary funds. This board doesn't, or provides an important service in our county and, um, we're happy to hear from them. And so Jeff, if you want to come on up, um, we will hear from them. And then, Counsel, we do have their, their annual check that we give them, that you budget for them, and so we'll let Jeff take that with him tonight.
Sure. Next time, should we like have a five-foot-by-five-foot check?
You know, I thought about that. It wasn't in my budget this year, though.
It's in theirs.
Yeah.
It's in theirs.
I might break the camera, so you might rethink that. No, my name is Jeff Terry. This is my first year being chairman on the Recreation Board. No matter what she said, I'm an open book. Call me anytime, anyplace, anywhere. I work for myself, so I generally answer the phone the first time. Just to begin with, I'd like to thank Commissioner Thomas and Nicole and Tracy. They're just so valuable people. We had some important questions, um, this year, me being a chairman. One of them, I'll just tell you to begin with, to arise, that we noticed that your tourism board gave three grants to individuals that asked similar stuff, but we didn't know the complete information, but we checked through Nicole and Tracy and, uh, we found that they were asking for different budgetary items on our grant. So, we're really trying to be an open book. Anybody's welcome. Generally, our meetings are on the first Tuesday at 6:30. So anybody's welcome, that kind of conflicts with yours at times. But, uh, this last, generally, we get somewhere around 150,000. It's from the minerals grants, trust funds, somewhere along that lines. We were lucky this year, we had a little carryover because you kind of changed, uh, all the format of the Recreation Board, and by the time that got through the previous year, some of the projects from the other, uh, um, three or four projects weren't be able to be completed. So we had 204,000 in budget this year, but it's generally around 150,000. There's five board members. One of my goals is, is to try and get a member in each region of the county, at least five different regions. At times, I've been on the board for two years, and then this is my third year as chairman. I kind of want to spread it out so we're more equal in what we do and how we do everything. This was the first year we kind of had, uh, before, we used to just, uh, rate all the projects that came in. Um, just, people would say, okay, there's 20 projects, let's do it, one through 20. But we worked with Kendall and we came up with a points-based system. Hopefully, you had a copy of that if you were here last year, I was a chairman. But just kind of some of the things we do, the title of projects, measly 10 points, the description 10 points, matching funds, we give 15 points. In-kind match, we give 15 points. Out-year cost of maintenance was 15 points. Usage by Twilla County residents was 10 points, and total usage was 10 points. And, uh, resource life expectancy of the project, we'd give 10 points. And maintenance cost was 10 points, which was 100. I think we might tweak this a little bit because sometimes we had issues with maybe our, uh, outer town or, uh, um, for example, sorry, Stockton. They don't quite have the population like some of the others do, and I thought sometimes they were graded down, not because of their project, but just because of their size and the usage of Twilla County residents. And, other than that, I think things went smooth. We didn't have very many controversial, well, I don't know of any controversial items that we've had, so, um, other than that, does anybody have any questions I can tell you? Are you interested in kind of where we, the money went?
Yeah, have you got some titles of the projects read?
Yeah. Okay, we had a basketball, pickleball court in Lake Point. We had a Veterans Memorial Park that we gave them some money. Stansberry Service Agency, um, continuization. We like to continue projects that are big, their amphitheater, we gave some to them. We gave some to Twilla County Parks for some, some of their interests. We gave some to Bitten Spur, um, radiation projects, South Rim Neighborhood, um, Area Project, Lighthouse Adult Care Facility, so it was a small grant for some exercise equipment, and we felt that was good. TC United, we gave a grant to, Rush Valley Tennis Court, Twilla County Senior Center, Clark Historical Farm, Twilla Gun Club, and Grantsville City Radio Arena, um, project. So we had 14 projects, and because of the, about 54,000 extra funds, we were able to fund everything 90-plus percent in most of them. So, does anybody have any questions? We're open for suggestions, even though we're kind of, you know, we still look to you as guidance and help and anything, and any suggestions at any time, you're welcome to call.
Thank you for your volunteerism and for your willingness to serve on the board and to go through those. I know it takes extra time out of the way from your work and family, so that, I am appreciative. And some of those projects, uh, been recipients of, my family has, so that's been wonderful. And, just so you know, Stockton does outpopulate anybody else if you count dogs and cats.
I appreciate your service in the board, and it's a good group. In fact, I'm gonna ask, if I can be excused at 6:30, to come down and join you for a short part of your, for at least some of your meetings.
You're welcome.
We'll be downstairs. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Jeff, you guys have always done a good job, so we appreciate everything. Hope the boys are well.
Yeah, uh, we appreciate your support and the things that you do for us, and especially, like I'd said, I, we appreciate Nicole and Tracy and all that they do, because there's sometimes legal things that come up, why we have questions, and they go straight to the attorney or whoever they need to, to get back with us. So appreciate your time, and I'd like to excuse myself to go to my board meeting in 15 minutes.
You bet, thank you.
I have the next item. That's why I'm here again, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you got another comment. I apologize. Wonderful. That was a presentation, so we'll go to number five, line item transfer. Go ahead, Allison.
All right, Counsel, this line item transfer doesn't technically need to come before you, but we're bringing it before you just so, for transparency purposes. What this is, is we are moving, um, the funds, um, these corridor preservation funds that are, um, uh, their use is directed by COG into a COG-directed fund with the, um, third-quarter preservation fund. So, anything that COG has control over or use, all those funds are going to now sit in the same fund. And so, um, we're not budgeting these funds, basically, it's just going from one fund balance to another fund balance, but because COG does direct these funds, we just, like I said, for transparency purposes, want to make sure that everybody knows that we're taking it from one, our capital projects fund, and putting it into a, a fund that's specifically for COG purposes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Wardle first.
Last week at the WFRC, uh, board meeting, there were two things that came out of that that we, we really need to pay attention to. There's appear, there, it is appearing that they're going to add another percent on the twen, the quarter cent sales tax. That will be used for not only connectivity but for trails, and on Friday, the governor announced inner, the ability to, uh, have all the trails work together in the state of Utah for connectivity. And so Cory, I think it would be important that we stay on top of this primary issue. Those funds can come out of the corridor preservation funds, the UTA sales tax that, that we have, that third-quarter sales tax. And so, i- in the future, I think they have to be kept separate.
Absolutely.
Is what the legislation is, is purporting, but it's something that we're going to want to watch and pay attention to going into this issue.
Yeah, and for clarification purposes, third quarter and corridor preservation will be held separately within the fund, but we just want any COG, and our purpose in that is that we want to be able to go before COG and tell COG, this is what you have in the fund, so that COG can budget those funds more appropriately, or just know about them, and they're not just stuffed away in a, in a dark corner somewhere.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Tripp.
You know, Allison, I've been on COG for four years. We've never touched corridor preservation or knew we had that access to do so.
Yeah.
Because frankly, land prices are only going up. It seems like we ought to be working out how it is we do this.
Yeah.
Tom, a- as you say that, I believe one of the things that we have to look at in the third-quarter sales tax and corridor preservation fund is we have to spend money every year. If we don't start doing that, it could ding us on the state audits, when the state audits, how we spend the money.
So, I, I, as long as the funds are set aside, and truthfully, the reason that these, my understanding of the reason that these funds have built up the way that they have is because they were, they've been set aside for Mid Valley Highway, truthfully. And so, th- they aren't being, they haven't not been spent because nobody knew about them. The general consensus in COG was that they were set aside for the purposes of whatever the second phase of Mid Valley was. If that's still the, the direction of COG, then that's fine. I just wanted them in a place that weren't, that wasn't intermingled with ours. And, and truthfully, when you looked at our 40 fund budget, it was actually very strange how they were coming in, because it looked like it was revenue for us, when truthfully, if we were getting a grant from this corridor preservation fund, there should be four times it comes in and out. Once when it comes in for COG, and then once when it comes in for us. And so, it just, it just didn't look right, and I, I'd never wanted that perception that the county was not properly handling those funds.
So, you know, third quarter, we've been doing for a few years.
Yes.
In fact, we've taken money there three years in a row. But the other one, I think that's something that COG will have to develop over the next few months.
Yes. Yeah, and the more, I, I, I do think that there needs to be policy around both types of funds.
And frankly, our understanding is UDOT will come back with further detailed engineering on the 28th of January, so maybe that'll be the time to apply money to a corridor.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Allison. But you have, don't leave yet.
Yes.
Six A.
All right, Counsel, I have, um, budget across, uh, budget adjustments for three funds. The first one that I have is for a budget adjustment in the manager's office. Uh, this is for $6,200 for their travel and training. The next one that I have is for $1,625. This is for, to transfer into the sheriff's budget. They sold a vehicle, and they now need to pay, um, put that money towards the task force. It was a task force vehicle to begin with, and so they just, this is the formality of that process, so.
I thought I heard you say they stole. The sheriff stole a vehicle.
Depends on who you talk to. The next one that we have is for, uh, aging for the UTA program. They have a, they've received $55,000, and they just need to, um, appropriate that throughout their budget. So they've got 20,000 for materials and supplies, $11,000 towards their, uh, transportation, 21,000 towards salaries and wages, and 3,000, 3,000 towards benefits. And then the last one that we have is, um, $40,000 through, um, the airport. 31,000 will come from their retained earnings, and then 9,000, um, comes from their gift shop revenue. They've changed how they do the gift shop out, out there. Previously, it was handled by the volunteer group out there, but we've taken that under our umbrella now, and so, um, that's being handled a little bit, little bit differently. So, 9,000 in revenue for the gift shop, 12,000 in expenses, and then the remainder is going towards building and grounds and materials and supplies and services.
Any other questions, Counsel? Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Why would we replace an HVAC system that's aging out at an airport? Why don't we wait till it just gets old and crashes?
I was gonna say, I hope you're kidding.
I'm sorry, I'm being sarcastic.
It feels too soon right now.
Nobody thought it was funny.
Any other questions on these? Six A?
Too soon, my friend, too soon.
Okay, move, we'll get that.
When we get into the meeting, you will need a public hearing, so.
Yeah, we'll move this, Counsel, can we move this forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us up to, uh, six B, Colin Winchester.
Wait, is this the great Colin Winchester?
It is.
The legal eagle? Impressive.
And this is my WWF championship belt, which I have painted black, and I wear it backwards so that you don't all notice it so much.
Well, you're styling.
So, are you gonna tell us your wrestling name?
I'm sure you'll come up with something, Mr. Wardle. I'm almost afraid to ask. Uh, before you, his resolution 2022-42, state statute requires each county to designate voter participation areas. These are the areas that come into play when there is an initiative or a referendum. If you are not a council manager form of government, if you're a county commission form of government, and you have to have four of these areas roughly the same in population, and you have to figure out how to do that. But if you are a five-member council, you can use your five-member council districts, provided that all of you are at large, which this particular council is. So the recommendation is for you to adopt your five council districts as your five-voter participation areas.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Put that on, move that on.
Okay. Ty, if you have anything, please raise your hand or be willing to comment and call on you. Are you okay with that?
My recommendation makes sense.
Okay. Wardle, move it. Okay, we'll move it on, thank you. That brings us down to contracts. WIC program, WIC program, ending seven, that's Jeff Combs from the Health Department.
Okay, gentlemen, these two contracts are annual contracts that we get at the Health Department. The first one, the WIC program, uh, you're probably familiar with the Women, Infants, Children Program, where they administer, uh, training and food for, uh, those that federal, that qualify for low income or reduced income for, uh, young women and children. This is the administrative portion of those funds, not the food voucher. So this pays for the staff to operate the program. This is federal funds that comes down through the state to the local health department. The second one, B, is the Public Health Emergency and Preparance Program, uh, the FEP. Again, that is federal funds passed down from the federal through the state to the local health departments to do activities such as, uh, planning mass vaccination clinics, mobilization clinics, emergency response plans, and so forth, and logistics. And this is an ongoing annual amount that we get.
Okay.
Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Move that forward. Move it forward. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you. That will bring us down to discussion items. Colin, are you gonna lead us in this, uh, the public infrastructure and district policy?
Yes, thank you. I'm back before you once again with a draft of the PID, the Public Infrastructure District Policy, the proposed policy for the county. Uh, I might say, in starting out here, that as you know, there has been an application for a PID pending for quite some time, but because we don't have a policy, therefore we have no way to address that application. Uh, that's the reason we drafted this policy. We're basically following a general format laid out in several other cities and counties across the state. So I think this, this is your third time on your work session where we've discussed this, we've made some changes to it. Most recently, there was an invitation for the council members to submit additional changes, and I did not receive any. Except for Mr. Tripp, who still believes that the statute allows TIF money to be used for PIDs, and that we don't want to do that in this county, and I just, I think that the PowerPoint presentation that he and I have seen that very clearly states that, I don't see there's any basis for it in the statute. I think that's an error.
In, in the discussion with the Wasatch Front Regional Council, a couple of the members of that, that was exactly what we were told, is that TIF money cannot be used.
And you're saying it can?
No, I'm saying that it, my view is that it cannot.
Said it was, yeah.
But, Mr. Tripp has a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know who created it, but it very clearly says it can be used, but I don't find any basis for that in the statute. I have seen the PowerPoint presentation, and it's clear as a bell. Yes, you can, but I don't think so.
Where'd you get the file?
Off the state's website.
Yeah.
My only concern, I mentioned it before, is about this bid, is, I don't like it at all, because I think its developers want them to give, commit, but they don't want to use their money. So my recommendation, and I think Scott brought it up too, is residential. I don't want to do it for a single-family homes, and I don't want to use it for a condo development, and here's the reason being, is if we were to adopt this, buyer beware. For some reason, if they don't find out about this, then they don't understand.
Turn your mic off.
So anyhow, it goes back to, uh, the, uh, you, the developer wants to use somebody else's money, they don't have enough money to do it themselves. If a homeowner comes in, and I don't like single dwellings, I don't want to do condos, hire, uh, twin homes, because it's buyer beware. If the buyer, the homeowner purchaser, was, did not know about it, and didn't get informed, then it's a shock to them when they finally get that once a year or ever, it would be recovered. So I'm not supportive of anything that has to do with family dwellings.
Does that, your resolution is taking that out, right?
No, it says single, only single family can be.
Says county will not create public infrastructure districts for single-family residential developments, and I would suggest that we add at the very next sentence, county will not allow TIF monies to be used for public infrastructure district, if that's in fact the consensus of the council.
Can we back up? Kendall, I, you're gonna love what I'm gonna say next. I totally see your point and disagree with it, at least in the policy.
It never has happened before.
And here's why. That's an evaluation part of the policy. That if a, a, a project comes in that has multifaceted development, whether it be, uh, industry, like, like, the, the area up at Station Corner, I think that's up in Farmington.
They're thinking Farmington Station?
Yeah, that one. That they may use a PID to do that, and that would be unfortunate if we, if we don't evaluate the project on its merits. Therefore, mixed use, I think we should at least say, we'll evaluate, and then say no if we don't like it. But for terms of the policy, I think we're all in agreement on single-family dwellings. Okay?
But my question is, single-family dwelling, I think that is a, a home staying by itself.
Correct.
Whereas condos.
Could, could be part of a mixed-use development, and you're already taking those out. And a mixed-use development may be something that we want, and that should be evaluated separately with the application.
Where do we catch that?
During the evaluation period toward, when the council, because the policy says, here's all the requirements they have to meet, and then the council decides whether or not a PID district can go forward. We could say no, because we, they, they come in and they do 200 condos, we could say no to that, and put some retail around it. That's something we could say no to, but it should be at least evaluated, and we shouldn't shut the door completely on these kind of developments.
But if, my, my concern is, I would have that, you would have that, we would understand to catch that, but if someone does not understand about buyer beware, and we let that slide through.
We, Kendall, I'm guaranteeing, we're not gonna let it slide through it.
In, in fact, we won't let it slide through, and here's why. Every PID is governed by what's called a governing document. The governing document is drafted after the council says, yes, go ahead, do this PID. Then we prepare, the governing document has to be signed off on by both the county and the developers. And in the governing document, there's a big paragraph about what notice there has to be. It's word-for-word in the statute, that notice gets recorded, it will show up on every title report of a potential buyer. Now, I can't make the buyers read the title reports or understand them, but at least it will be public record and make them available.
But the title companies in this town, they make sure they read them.
Right.
Also, Kendall, I would, I would add that, you know, councils after you, you're right, they could approve a PID that you wouldn't like, but guess what? The councils after you can also change the policy.
Correct.
So, you know, like any legal document, it's in rules or regulations, it's a living process, and they.
And I do think in some way, I don't want to hamstring future councils. I just, I, I think flexibility is great.
The way it's currently written?
Are we moving it forward with the addition that no TIF money will be used?
That's what I'm, is that what you're saying? Councilman Tripp?
I did send you an email on the 25th of January, or 25th of October. It explained I had a number of reservations and questions and wanted some more discussion. Quote, let's see if I can come up with it again. This was, uh, 4:44 PM on the last Tuesday. In the discussion last week's PIDs, Craig Smith explained that ERTA's, ERTA, in formulating their PID ordinance, framed the conditions for which they'd accept a PID.
You did.
I believe that the county should have a discussion that includes the breadth, size, cap on bonding, number of years, of what we think is appropriate for PIDs in the unincorporated areas. Allison McCoy expressed that some, maybe even most entities, have reservations due to governance difficulties with PIDs. I'd like to hear what those are, and then Allison wrote us a, kind of a detailed description of what the problems were.
Yes, I stand corrected, I remember those now.
And, uh, you know, I just, kind of summarizing, she said, you know, they've been told by UAC and the Utah Government Finance Officers Association, that you gotta be real careful with these, because they're tricky to man, manage, and once you've turned them loose, they're turned loose, and you can't go back and fix them. The first PIDs in Utah were in Wasatch County, they've since rescinded their idea of even having them, because of the difficulties.
That, that's not true.
That's what Allison said.
I know, but in the research that I've been looking at in Wasatch County, Heber City is considering two right now. The PID that was the problem was dealing with the Jordanell project.
But this is Wasatch County, I believe, not Heber City.
Yes, but i- it, you can't, you can't say that people aren't looking at them.
Okay.
That, that, that's, that's not true.
Okay, and the Salt Lake County one is, got a very complex one, trying to make sure they got all the Ts crossed, and it's, it's, it's daunting. So I, I think her considerations, everything the county expects out of a PID must be in the original govern, governing document. When I looked at Texas and Colorado, who has more of a history with PIDs, in both those cases, the county or city legislative body is the governance, they don't turn it over to an independent group. So it is not unelected people, it's always elected people acting as governance in Colorado and Texas.
So, can I make a comment?
I'm not quite finished with my question.
Yeah, when you're finished.
And, of course, the system requires the county to collect and disperse the funds, so there ought to be some sort of provision in our, uh, policy that gives us some, uh, cost to do that. And I think frankly, at the start of this policy, we ought to say something that no applicant should feel, uh, entitled to get a PID. For any good reason or no good reason, county can turn it down, so we don't get sued over people getting turned down on their PIDs. So it would put it in a situation where the county had to agree this was a terrifically good idea, rather than not. One of the problems that Texas pointed out was, be careful at putting, citing PIDs away from infrastructure. If you have to run long sewer If you have to run long sewer lines, long water lines, long utility lines, that generally causes problems in the long term of things. So I think you gotta have some of those things down. Do we have a limit of how long we would allow a PID to go?
The.
The statute allows you up to thirty.
Statute is thirty years.
But we can do whatever we want.
Can we go against the statute?
No, said you can go up to thirty, but you don't have to go to thirty.
Correct.
And do we need to have some bounds on how much you're willing to let them borrow money on it?
Wouldn't that be more of a project-specific question, though, not a policy question of evaluating all?
I'm saying, I would like to see that at least considered when you look at a PID.
Well, I, I think what we're doing, though, is we're mixing two things, Tom. Is you're mixing the evaluation of whether or not a PID should be formed versus creating a policy that an application can be accepted and reviewed.
Okay, well, I'd like to work on my first one, first of all.
Well, and that, I think that that's what my concern is, is that we can't muddy the water here about saying whether or not we want a PID. What we're trying to do is create an avenue for an applicant to fulfill something that's in state law, that can be accepted by the county for review.
Maybe.
Now, no, that's exactly what we're doing.
Yeah.
That, but it's not saying whether or not we should do PIDs. It's not saying whether or not it's an advantageous policy. That becomes the merit of the application. And I believe all the arguments you just made are great, but they're really not germane to what we're doing right here.
Well, I think they're germane to the idea of what you're gonna allow for a PID to be, Scott. I agree. We can, we can craft our policy, and I'm okay with that, but I think there ought to be some overall bounds that an applicant could expect that in Twillie County, we're gonna bound it this way.
And that would be dependent upon the application.
And I think you, I disagree with that part of it.
Okay. So, if, I mean, if you have some of that language, then I think you should, I mean, submit that to Colin, and then let's go. But we've been doing this for five weeks. I think we're on, I mean, three different meetings.
Three meetings.
So six weeks?
We do have language in there that says the creation of a PID is subject to the sole discretion of the county council.
So there's one.
And compliance with this policy does not obligate the council to approve the formation of the PID. And that's paragraph two, so that one's covered.
State law covers the third one that Tom talked about, and that was the years.
Yes, and there is in state law, there's the express provision that says, if the county council denies a PID, there is no liability whatsoever for that decision. Can't be sued.
So we can deny it for any reason?
It's completely to your discretion.
I just know that Allison sent comments, and Mike Jensen sent me.
No, I, I, I'm not.
Robert Stampson, that they're good comments and ought to be considered before we move ahead.
I've read all of those, but I see them as different issues. One is an evaluation tool, and one is an application tool. The application tool is for the person to even be able to say that, that a PID, they want us to look at a PID, which is granted in state law. I mean, it's not like we're crafting a new thing here. Now, we can say we don't want a PID policy, which will stop all PIDs. And that is what the vote would be on the policy tonight. Is that correct?
If you do not move the policy forward and approve it at some point, then you will have no PIDs in the county.
Correct.
Because you won't have any way to evaluate them and decide whether or not they're good or bad.
So that's the difference, is whether or not you like a PID, you can vote no on that. But the question is, the policy that's set forth in front of us, is it a tool that an application can be evaluated by? And then the other factors can come before the council for judgment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Or we could change it to limit and bound what's on the application. We can do that, too.
I think that whatever's on the application is already limited and bound.
Is it?
Yeah, because it's the application. It's a area. It is geographical. It is bound by subdivision or titles. So whatever's on there, and then if the council.
Is it bound by duration? A bound?
Yes, by state law.
Location? No, it isn't. It's not bound by those.
No, state law is bound. They can't have.
Bound, it is a maximum of thirty, but you can bound it a maximum of two if you choose.
And that would be a decision for those evaluating the application.
Okay. Frankly, you know, you can tell my position is, we're not ripe, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not ready to move this one on, but.
So Tom, Tom, you say that part of the plan is to have the duration that we're looking at? Is that what you're saying, Tom?
Is that you, Ty?
Yeah.
Yes.
You're not clear. I, I, repeat that, please.
Are you saying that we ought to make a certain duration part of our policy?
I'm saying that's.
Ten years.
I'd say you could pick, you could pick that or bound it. ERTA City, for example, set it at ten.
I, I think that is absolutely one of the most dangerous things that we can do when we are dealing with a market and limiting things that may help us with housing. And I, and when I say housing, I'm very careful, of multi-use development, of industrial development, of business development, to arbitrarily, because when you arbitrarily pull a number out of the air that has no basis, you can't effectively measure it. So if you say ten years, then there's no reasoning to the ten years, because you don't know what the application looks like. We've automatically hamstrung ourselves, and that is my concern. At some point, we need to understand, these are basically industrial areas that are within the county. There's basically some out in Skull Valley. There's north of Grantsville. And once, and possibly in Stansbury, maybe, but there's not a lot of places for industrial land. So many of our concerns are already rectified by the area. But to hamstring a council on an arbitrary standard deeply concerns me.
On the other hand, arguing the other side of that, you've got an independent governance body at some point who does whatever they want. They can continue to raise money and do whatever they need to do, which in some ways is good, but it has no control over the kinds of things they're gonna put in or what goes on that way. I just think it's.
Wouldn't the application and the evaluation of the application deal with that?
The governing documents should address all of those issues.
Correct.
And you have to approve the governing document, and if you're asleep at the wheel and legal staff is asleep at the wheel, yeah, it's possible something slides through, but I would hope that doesn't happen.
Can the council, are we making recommendations to the document, to the application? Say, so they apply for one to twenty years, and we say, hold on one for fifteen years?
Yes.
Can that be negotiated or not?
Yes, it can.
Or dictated.
Or dictated.
To me, it's like a TIF agreement or an RDA agreement, that the terms of the agreement have to be acceptable to both the applicant and the governing body. And if the terms are not acceptable to the governing body, then the governing body simply can say no.
That's how I understand it.
Yeah.
So what did Salt Lake County have in their PID? I assume you read through that one, Colin?
I did, and I don't recall anyone, we read several. I do not recall anyone other than ERTA setting financial limits or terms shorter than thirty years. It's possible, we read seven or eight of these things, and it's possible that some did, but I do not recall anyone other than ERTA doing that.
Okay.
So the question that Colin brought up first is, the recommendation from Councilman Thomas is to put, and no, at no time can TIF money be used for that, right?
Yes.
Is that correct? Are you okay with that language?
Oh, I think that's appropriate language.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Hoffman?
Yeah, that's fine.
I also agree with that, Colin.
So I think we're moving it forward.
That's the next question, or?
I'm not ready to.
Not ready to?
No.
Councilman Hoffman?
Yeah, I think I'm ready to move it forward, but I'm, after Allison's email and stuff, I'm gonna be, you know, more inclined to be less in favor.
Okay, so are you, are you wanting to move it forward for a vote tonight? Or do you want to move it forward to a?
Same place at some point.
Tell me what he just said.
He said yes.
Okay. I'm trying to talk, you're talking, so I'm not understanding.
Well, just be quiet.
That's what my wife keeps saying.
There are, there are two things that really hurt my back, coughing and laughing, and you just got one of them.
There you go. Okay, we'll move that one forward. And then the next one is Planning Commission membership?
Yes, and I'll be doing this for Rochelle, who couldn't be here tonight. There are two vacancies on the Planning Commission as a result of our recent change that said no elected or appointed official in another governmental entity can serve on the Planning Commission. That would be Craig Smith from ERTA and John Wright from the Stansbury Service Agency. Both of them are continuing to serve somewhat, because our other ordinance says you continue to serve until your replacement is appointed and sworn in. We will also have two additional vacancies that occur on December thirty-first, just because their terms will be up. Tony Scott, who recently was moved from an alternate member to a full-time member, and Scott Jacobs. They are both eligible for reappointment, and they have both indicated that they are willing to accept reappointment if the council wishes to have them come back. So we do need to address the Craig Smith and John Wright vacancies, and the whole purpose I'm bringing this before you tonight was to encourage you to go out and recruit members of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Counsel?
We should do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, I look for a motion. Let's see, and we have, let's see, closed item or closed meeting item?
We have two for later. I don't think we have time.
Don't have time right now. Okay, now I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, we are adjourned at six forty. Looking for a motion to adjourn.